Hello and welcome to study session eleven of daily memory lab. In today's session, we will be doing round two of supply under GST chapter. Page number thirty-two to forty-two, we will do round two of that which we just studied yesterday, round one. And then we will do round one of uh whatever the pages from forty-three till maybe fifty-two or fifty-three depending upon the time availability. On that note, let's begin today's session before that we will set up the pre-study session intention. Now I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection, my goal is to only make a tiny bit of progress in the next thirty to sixty minutes. On that note, let us begin round two of page number thirty-two to forty-two. We will start from here, stock transfers or branch transfers qualify as supply. It is a common practice in business to transfer goods transferred among different units of same entity, for instance, distribution of samples manufactured in a factory to different branches or transfer of goods from factory to depot showroom for sale therefrom. From one warehouse to another warehouse, from one branch to another branch where the demand of the goods is higher. Since the transfer is within the same business, the transferor unit would not charge any amount to the transfer unit. Similarly, it is also possible that one brand supplies services to another branch of the same entity without consideration. These transactions are termed as self-supplies. Under GST, these transactions though undertaken without consideration will also qualify as supply. Provided the transfer of goods or services is between different locations of same legal entity as these are transactions between distinct persons or establishments of distinct persons. We saw a couple of uh days back, I think, concept of related persons and distinct persons. So now this will be covered under the term distinct persons. If a factory has a separate warehouse which has a separate GST number and the factory supplies goods to that showroom or to that retailer or to that warehouse. Then those two premises will be considered as separate and distinct premises and therefore it will be treated like transactions having occurred between two separate persons and therefore it will attract supply. Raghubir Fabrics transfers thousand shirts from his factory located in Lucknow to his retail showroom in Delhi. So that the same can be sold from there. The factory and retail showroom of Raghubir Fabrics are registered in the states where they are located. Although no consideration is charged, supply of goods from factory to retail showroom constitutes supply. Okay, so factory is in Lucknow, showroom is in Delhi, they are actually two separate states at even two separate states and then they got two separate GST numbers, so they will be treated as two distinct persons only. However, transfer between two units of a legal entity under single registration apparently within the same date will not be considered as supply. This can be understood with the help of the following example. Raghubir Fabrics transfers thousand shirts from his factory located in Lucknow to his retail showroom in Kanpur. So that the same can be sold from there. It has been taken one regist- it has taken one registration in the state of Uttar Pradesh. Declaring Lucknow factory as its principal place of business and Kanpur showroom as its additional place of business. Since no consideration is charged, supply of goods from factory to retail showroom in the same state under same under single registration does not constitute supply. So the showroom, the factory is in Lucknow which is in UP and showroom is in Kanpur which is also in UP and they both are registered under a single registration number. Therefore, any stock transfer between these two entities will not be treated as supply. However, in the example above, if Raghubir Fabrics obtains separate registrations for Lucknow factory and Kanpur showroom. Stock transfer between the Lucknow factory and Kanpur showroom will constitute supply. The concept arising from the above discussion is summarized in the below diagram. Do the entities have same pan? Yes. Do they have separate registrations? Then there is if any goods moving in between them. It is treated as supply. If the establishments have same pan and if the establishments also have single GST registration. Then any unit, any transfer between those two units will not be treated as supply. Okay, fourth point, supply of goods or services are both between an employer or an employee, uh between an employer and employee. In terms of the definition of related person given above, employer and employee are related persons. However, services provided by an employee to the employer in the course of or in relation to his employment are outside the scope of GST, treated as neither supply of goods nor as supply of services as per Schedule Three to the GST CGST Act. Gifts by employer to employee. So basically if an employee is working for an employer, he is technically providing services which could be considered as supply, but in GST they are specifically excluding that from the concept of supply itself. Now gifts by employer to employee. Further, proviso to para two of Schedule One of uh Schedule One provides that gifts up to fifty thousand in value in a financial year by an employer to an employee shall not be treated as supply of goods or services or both. However, gifts of value more than fifty thousand made without consideration are supply and are subject to GST when made in the course or furtherance of business. The term gift has not been defined in the GST law. In common parlance, gift is made without consideration, is voluntary in nature and is made occasionally. It can be demanded as a matter of right by the employee and the employee and the employee cannot move to a court of law for obtaining a gift. Perquisites by employer to employee. Since services by an employee to the employer in the course of or in relation to his employment are outside the scope of GST. Supply by the employer to the employee in terms of contractual agreement entered into between the employer and employee will not be subject to GST, okay? Any perquisites provided by the employer to its employees in terms of contractual agreement entered into between the employer and the employee or or in or regarding the services provided by the employee to the employer in relation to its his employment. It follows therefrom that perquisites provided by the employer to the employee in terms of contractual agreement entered into between the employer and the employee will not be subject to GST. Further, the input tax credit scheme under GST does not allow I T C of membership of a club, health and fitness center. It follows therefore that if such services are provided free of charge to all the employees by the employer, then the same will not be subject to GST. The same would be, the same would hold true for free housing to the employees when the same is provided in terms of the contract between the employer and the employee and this part and parcel of the cost to the company. Okay, principal agent, para three of schedule one. Supply of goods by a principal to his agent without consideration where the agent undertakes to supply such goods on behalf of the principal is considered as supply. Similarly, supply of goods by an agent to his principal without consideration where the agent undertakes to receive such goods on behalf of the principal is considered as supply. Points which merit consideration in this regard are as follows. Only supply of goods and not supply of services is covered here. Supply of goods between principal and agent without consideration is also supply. Thus, the supply of services between principal and the agent and vice versa would require consideration to be present so as to be considered as supply, thus making it liable to GST. In order to determine whether a particular principal-agent relationship falls within the ambit of para three of schedule one as discussed above or not, the deciding factor is whether the invoice for the further supply of goods on behalf of the principal is being issued by the agent or not. In other words, the crucial point is whether or not the agent has the authority to pass or receive the title of the goods on behalf of the principal. So the deciding factor is whether the invoice for the further supply of goods on behalf of the principal is being issued by the agent or not. Does the agent have an authority to issue invoice on behalf of the principal? If that is the case, then whatever the supply that is being made between principal and the agent will be deemed as supply. Where invoice for further supply is being issued by the agent in his name, then any provision of goods from the principal to the agent would fall within the fold of para three above, so it will come under schedule one. However, where the invoice is issued by the agent to the customer in the name of principal. There such agent shall not fall within the ambit of para three above. Similarly, where the goods being procured by the agent on behalf of the principal or invoiced in the name of the agent. Then further provision of the said goods by the agent to the principal would be covered by para three above. Okay, so the flowchart type of thing that they have given is where the invoice is issued by the agent to customer in the name of, okay, where the invoice is issued by the agent to the customer in the name of principal, then he is not like, in this will not come under schedule one. If it is issued in the name of agent itself, then it will come under the name of uh schedule one, it will come under the ambit of schedule one. The above clarification can be understood with the help of the following scenario-based examples. Anmol appoints Bolu to procure certain goods from the market. Bolu identifies various suppliers who can provide the goods as desired by Anmol and asks the supplier to send the goods and to issue the invoice directly to Anmol. So let us understand this transaction. Anmol is appointing Bolu to procure certain goods on his behalf. Bolu identifies various suppliers and can provide the goods as desired by Anmol and asks the supplier to send the goods issued directly to Anmol. So he, here Bolu is acting like a pure agent. So he is just strictly saying that, he is saying that I can just go and find the parties for you. Invoicing all these legal things on the, you know, getting the goods and everything, you take care. So he is pointing directly to Anmol, his Bolu is just providing his service. So he is acting as a procurement agent. And has no way involved himself in the supply or receipt of the goods hence in accordance with the provision of this act. Bolu is not an agent for uh checking whether it, schedule one will apply or not. Money Money Bank, a banking company, appoints Mandar to auction certain goods. The auctioneer arranges for the auction and identifies the potential bidders. The highest bid is accepted and the goods are sold to the highest bidder by Money Money Bank. The invoice for the supply of the goods is issued by Money Money Bank to the successful bidder. In this scenario, the auctioneer is merely providing the auctioneering services with no role played in the money, in the supply of the goods. Even in this scenario, Mandar is not an agent of Money Money Bank for the supply of goods in terms of para three of schedule one. Okay, Gautam, an artist, appoints Gambhir to auction his painting. Gambhir arranges for the auction, identifies the potential bidders. The highest bid is accepted and the painting is sold to the highest bidder. The invoice for the supply of the painting is issued by Gambhir on behalf of Gautam but in his own name. And the painting is delivered to the successful bidder. In this scenario, Gambhir is ma- raising the invoice in his own name. Gambhir is the agent here. He has sold the painting done by Gautam, so Gautam is the principal. But Gambhir has asked the customer, no, no, Gambhir has raised the invoice and in his own name and sent it to the customer, both the goods as well as the invoice. So in this situation, Gambhir is purely acting on behalf of Gautam, the principal. So in this case, this scenario is covered under para three of schedule one. A C N F agent a C N F agent takes possession of the goods from the principal and issues the invoice in his own name. In such cases, C N F commission agent is an agent of the principal for the supply of goods in terms of para three of schedule one. The disclosure on or non-disclosure of the name of the principal is immaterial in such situation. Okay, so he, the C N F agent or the commission agent is getting the goods and issuing the invoice in his own name. So in this case. So he is definitely the agent and it will be covered under schedule one. Number twenty-six, Ravi sells agricultural produce by utilizing the services of Kavi who is a commission agent as per the Agricultural Produce Marketing Committee Act of the state. Kavi identifies the buyers and sellers and sells the agricultural produce on behalf of Ravi for which he charges a commission from Ravi. As per the A P M C Act, the commission agent is a person who buys or sells the agricultural produce on behalf of his principal or facilitates buying and selling of agricultural produce on behalf of his principal and receives by way of remuneration a commission or percentage upon the amount which involved in such transaction. In this case, where the invoice is issued by Kavi to the buyer, then he is an agent. However, in cases where the invoice is directly issued by Ravi to the buyer, the commission agent does not fall into the category of agent under paragraph three. Okay, now let us talk about this delcreder agent. A question was posed by the industry whether to supply between, whether supply between a principal and a delcreder agent would also get covered under schedule one. The government clarified the doubt of the industry by way of the following clarification. Before going through the clarification, let us first understand what is a D C A or who is a D C A. In commercial trade parlance, a D C A is a selling agent who is engaged by a principal to assist in supply of goods or services by contacting potential buyers on behalf of the principal. The factor that differentiates a D C A from other agents is that the D C A guarantees the payment to the supplier. In such scenarios, where the buyer fails to make payment to the principal by the due date. The D C A makes the payment to the principal on behalf of the buyer, effectively providing an insurance against default by the buyer. And for his, and for this reason, the commission paid to the D C A may be relatively higher than that paid to the, paid to a normal agent. In order to guarantee timely payment to the supplier, the D C A can resort to various methods including extending short-term transaction-based loans to the buyer or paying the supplier himself and recovering the amount from the buyer with interest at a later rate. This loan is to be repaid by the buyer along with an interest to the D C A at a rate mutually agreed between D C A and the buyer. So now circular. Circular number seventy-three slash forty-seven of two thousand eighteen. It clarifies the following. Issue number one, whether a D C A falls under the ambit of agent under paragraph three of schedule one. As already clarified by circular number fifty-seven slash thirty-one, GST. Whether or not the D C A will fall under the ambit of agent under para three of schedule one depends on the following possible scenarios. In case where the invoice for supply of goods is issued by the supplier to the customer. Either DC, either himself or through D C A, the D C A does not fall under the ambit of agent. So who raises the invoice? Second case, in case where the invoice of, invoice for supply of goods is issued by the D C A in his own name. The D C A would fall under the ambit of agent. Whether the temporary short-term transaction-based loan extended by the D C A to the recipient or the buyer for which interest is charged by the D C A is to be included in the value of goods being supplied by the principal. Where D C A is not an agent under para three of schedule one. In such a scenario, following activities are taking place. Supply of goods from supplier to recipient, supply of agency services from D C A to the, to the supplier or recipient or both. Supply of extension of loan services by the D C A to the recipient. It is clarified that in cases where the D C A is not an agent under paragraph three of schedule one. The temporary short-term transaction-based loan being provided by D C A to the buyer is a supply of service by the D C A to the recipient on principal-to-principle basis and it is an independent supply. Therefore, interest being charged by the D C A would not form part of the value of supply of goods supplied by the supplier. Okay, question number three. Where a D C A is an agent under para three of schedule one and makes payment to the principal on behalf of the buyer and charges interest to the buyer for delayed payment. Along with the value of goods being supplied, whether the interest will form part of the value of supply of goods also or not. In such a scenario, following activities are taking place. Supply of goods by the supplier to the D C A, further supply of goods by the D C A to the recipient. Supply of agency services by the D C A to the supplier or the recipient or both. Extension of credit by D C A to the recipient. It is clarified that in cases where the D C A is an agent under paragraph three of schedule one. The temporary short-term ba- transaction-based credit being provided by D C A to the buyer no longer retains its character of an independent supply and it is subsumed in the supply of the goods by the D C A to the recipient. It is emphasized that the activity of extension of credit by the D C A to the recipient would not be considered as a separate supply as it is in the context of the supply of goods made by the D C A to the recipient. It is further clarified that the value of interest charged for such credit would be required to be included in the value of supply of goods by the D C A to the recipient as per section fifteen subsection two clause D. So this is what we saw yesterday. For the month of March, Mister Handsome in his D C A capacity. He has supplied sale of goods in his capacity as two lakh eighty and interest earned from the set customers for short-term credit facility provided. Provided for timely payment of dues is twenty thousand. Further, commission charged from Charm Limited in respect of D C A services is thirty thousand. The value of supply of goods to customers and value of supply of agency services to Charm Limited is it will be two lakh eighty plus twenty, so three lakh and thirty thousand for the supply of services. Okay, so we had read till here yesterday and now we will proceed from here. This will be round one for today. So round two completed. We have completed this. Now let us read today's quota. Roughly, I am expecting to read around ten pages. Let us see. Importation of services, para four of schedule one. Import of services by a person from a related person or from his establishments located outside India without consideration in the course or furtherance of business shall be treated as supply. Import of services by a person from a related person from his establishments located outside India without consideration in the course or furtherance of business is treated as supply. Jumru Associates received legal consultancy services from its head office located in Malaysia. The head office has rendered such consultancy services free of cost to its branch office. Since Jumru Associates and the head office are related persons. Services received by Jumru Associates will qualify as supply even though head office has not charged from it. Okay. Chakmukh, a proprietor registered in Delhi, has sought architect services from his son located in US with respect to his newly constructed house in Delhi. Although services have been received by Chakmukh without consideration from his son, a related person. Yet it will not qualify as supply since the same has not been received in the course or furtherance of business. There should not be consideration at the same time, it should be received in the course or furtherance of situation. If it is with, received with consideration, then obviously it is a supply only, but if it is without consideration, received without consideration from a related or distinct person in the course or furtherance of business, it is supply. In other cases, it is not a supply. So the defining thing is it should be in the course of or or furtherance of business. In the preceding paragraphs, we have discussed the provisions of schedule one which enumerates the cases where an activity is treated as supply even though it is undertaken free of cost. In this backdrop, let us now examine whether the items given free of cost in case of some of the sales promotion schemes qualify as supply or not. A number of sales promotion schemes are commonly employed by the businesses to increase sales volume or to encourage the use or trial of of a product or service so that the new customers get attracted towards their products, okay? For instance, certain sections of trade and industry such as pharmaceuticals companies provide drug samples to their stalkists, dealers, medical practitioners, et cetera. Or sometimes companies announce offers like buy one get one free. That is buy one soap and get one soap free or get one toothbrush along with the purchase of toothpaste. As we have already seen that, as per section seven subsection one clause A. The goods or services which are supplied free of cost without any consideration shall not be treated as supply except in the case of activities mentioned in schedule one, okay? In view of the same, few sales promotion schemes have been examined as under free samples and gifts. Samples are supplied free of cost without any consideration, do not qualify as supply except where the activity falls under the ambit of schedule one. Okay, buy one get one offer. It may appear at first glance that in case of offers like buy one get one free, one item is supplied free of cost without any consideration. In fact, it is not an individual supply of free goods. But a case of two or more individual supplies where a single price is being charged for the entire supply. It can be best treated as supplying two goods for the price of one. Taxability of such supply will be dependent upon as to whether the supply is a composite supply or a mixed supply and the tax rate shall be determined accordingly. Concept of composite and mixed supply has been discussed subsequently in this chapter. Okay, Mister Venkat hired a professional firm based in UK to receive the legal consultancy services for his family dispute. A professional firm based in the UK to receive consultancy service, okay? The services received by Venkat in case in case such services are received by Mister Venkat. The services received by Mister Venkat free of cost. Okay, one free of cost, two for a consideration of US dollars thousand. Amount to supply, amount to supply, do not amount to supply, amount to supply. Amount to supply and do not amount to supply, do not amount to supply and do not amount to supply. So the answer will be D here because Venkat hired a professional firm based in the UK. No, 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 no. Based in the UK to receive legal consultancy service for his family dispute. This will come here, import of service with consideration. So the first situation they are saying free of cost because it is not in the course or furtherance of business. The moment I, I got with consideration, so it doesn't matter whether it is in the course or furtherance of business or it is not in the course or it is for personal reasons, whether for business purpose or for personal purpose. The moment you receive with consideration, it will be considered as supply. Therefore, in this situation, for a consideration of thousand dollars, this is this amounts to supply. So option B is the correct answer. Now here first a situation, free of cost is there, therefore, free of cost. This situation will apply, improved of service without consideration, without uh the course or furtherance of business, therefore it is not a supply. Okay, on that note, let us proceed. There has always been an ambiguity as to whether activities or transactions involving supply of goods or services by any person other than an individual to its members or vice versa, fall within the purview of supply or not. Clause A to section seven subsection one brings in the certainty that said activities or transactions are covered within the scope of supply under GST and ensures the level of GST, levy of GST on such activities or transactions. This has been discussed as under. Activities or transactions between a person other than an individual and its members constituents for consideration, members or constituents for consideration. Activities or transactions involving supply of goods or services between a person other than an individual that is association, club, et cetera, and its members or constituents for cash deferred payment or other valuable consideration are covered are covered within the ambit of supply as per section seven one clause double A. Further explanation to clause double A as to section seven subsection one clarifies that for the purpose of this clause. Such person and its members or constituents shall be deemed to be two separate persons. And the supply of activities or transactions between them shall be deemed to take place from one such person or one such person to another. The explanation starts with a non-abstantic clause. One such person to another. The explanation starts with a non-abstantic clause. And shall therefore have, huh therefore, and shall therefore shall have an overriding effect. Over anything contained in any other court of law for the time being enforced. Or any judgment decree or order of any court tribunal or authority. The aforementioned explanation prevents the application of doctrine of mutuality by such persons. Okay. Example number twenty nine, resident welfare association of Sanskriti society supplies air conditioners to its members at a concessional price. Example number thirty, a resident welfare association collects maintenance charges from its members for services provided. Here in the both, here in both the aforementioned examples, it shall be deemed that. The residential welfare association and its members are two separate persons. And it shall be deemed that the supply has taken place between the association and its members, okay. Activities or transactions to be treated as supply of goods or supply of services. Section seven subsection one A classifies. Certain activities or transactions constituting supply either as supply of goods or supply of services. Schedule two to the C G S T Act contains the list of activities or transactions. Which have been classified either as supply of goods or supply of service. This helps in mitigating the ambiguities which existed in the earlier laws. Under earlier tax regime, restaurants used to charge both service tax and VAT on the value of food served. This is so because sale of goods and provision of service were involved. And therefore taxable even under both the statutes that is respective VAT law. And service law and service tax law got triggered. Under G S T, supply by a restaurant is treated as composite supply. Concept of composite supply is discussed in detail in subsequently in this chapter. Since supply of food and service is naturally bundled in ordinary course of business. Further entry, further entry six B of Schedule Two specifically provides that such composite supply. Shall be treated as supply of service. Hence, the entire value of invoice shall be treated as value of service and leviable to G S T accordingly. The matters listed out in Schedule Two are primarily those which had been entangled in litigation in the earlier regime. Owing to the, owing to their complex nature and the susceptibility to double taxation. Okay, para number one, activity transfer type. Any transfer of title in goods, which is supply of goods. Shivaji sells ready-made garments to its customers, which is proper supply of goods. Any transfer of right in goods or undivided share in goods without transfer of title thereof. Genius Equips Limited gives machinery on rent to Suhasi manufacturers. Either supply of, this supply of services. Okay, next, any transfer of title in goods under an agreement which stipulates that. Property in goods shall pass at a future date upon payment or full consideration as agreed. Dhrupa Capital supplied goods on higher purchase basis to customers. Optima manufacturers supplies toys to retailers on sale or return basis. Both are supply of goods. Land and building, any lease, tenancy, easement, license to occupy land. So lease are, lease agreement for land, supply of services. Any lease or letting out of building including a commercial, industrial or residential complex. For business or commerce wholly or partly supply of services. A shop let out in a busy market area, supply of services. Treatment or process, any treatment or process which is applied on another person's goods. Damani dying house dyes the cloths given by Shubham Textiles on job work basis. Supply of services, transfer of business assets. Goods forming part of business assets are transferred or disposed of by and. By or under directions of person carrying on the business so as no longer to form part of those assets. Supply of goods. Goods held or used for business are put to private use or, or made available to any person for use. For any purpose other than business by or under directions of person carrying on the business. The person manufacturing and selling wooden furniture takes one chair manufactured by him. For use at his house, supply of services. Okay, goods forming part of assets of any business carried on by a person. Who ceases to be a taxable person shall be deemed to be supplied by him in the course or furtherance of his business. Immediately before he ceases to be a tra- taxable person. Arun, a trader is winding up his business. Any goods left in stock shall be deemed to be supplied by him. Exceptions, business is transferred as a going concern to another person. Business is carried on by a personal representative who is deemed to be a taxable person. In all these situation, it will be treated as supply of goods only. Okay, renting or immobile property, this is pretty much straightforward, it is supply of services. Renting of a commercial pro- complex, renting of precincts of a religious place. Renting of property to an educational institution. Permitting use of immobile property for placing vending dispensing machines, all those. Construction of complex, building, civil structure, et cetera. Construction of a complex building civil structure or a part thereof, including a complex or building. Intended for sale to a buyer wholly or partly except where the entire consideration has been received. After the issuance of completion certificate were required by the competent authority or after its first occupation, whichever is earlier. So that is also supply of services. Rati Builders has constructed individual residential units for agreed consideration of one point two crore per unit. Ninety lakh per unit were received before issuance of completion certificate by the competent authority. And its first occupation and balance after completion. The term construction includes additions, alterations, replacements or remodeling of any existing civil structure. The term competent authority means the government or any authority issued to, authorized to issue. Completion certificate under any law for the time being in force. And in case of non-re requirement of such certificate from such authority. From any of the following namely an architect with, registered with the council or architect, or council of architecture constituted. Under the Acts, Architects Act nineteen seventy two. Or a chartered engineer registered with the Institution of Engineers in India. And or a licensed surveyor of the respective local body of the city or town or village. Or development or planning authority. Temporary transfer, so. The thing is, let's say you are booking an apartment. You ha- you have to pay the en- almost like most amount of the money. Right before the entire con- you know, entire consideration has been received after issuance of completion certificate. So let's say you are booking an apartment and you have already paying a portion of the cons- an apartment's value to the builder. So builder will not wait until the building is fully complete and then uh he will transfer the title to you. The apartment will already be booked in your name and you will start paying money to the uh builder. So in that situation, it's like it's already a portion of that apartment is yours. And the builder is only doing the construction work. So in that situation, it will be supply of services. So when an apartment will be considered as a sale, sale of goods. When I actually construct the entire apartmentation, uh entire apartment. Without receiving any consideration from a third party, that is, that is buyer or anybody. So it's like I am constructing my own house and then the house is almost complete, so I got this certificate of completion. From the authorized authority. Then I sell the goods to somebody else, so it's like as good as completed finished product I am selling to somebody else. So in that situation, the element of service is very less, so in that situation it will be supply of goods. Let's go to point number C. Temporary transfer or permitting use or enjoyment of any intellectual property right, temporary transfer of patent. Development, design, programming, customization, adaptation, upgradation, enhancement, in implementation of I T software. Sudha Solutions develops an accounting software for a business firm, so obviously it is service. Agreeing to obligation to refrain from an act or to tolerate an act or situation or to do an act. Cable operator Sakkaram has entered into an agreement with cable operator Atma Ram. That Sakkaram will not provide cable connections in the specified areas where Atma Ram. Is providing the connections. Non-compete agreements constitute supply of service. Security deposit forfeited in the event of cancellation of tour package by the customer. Please refer the detailed discussion on this para of schedule two given at the end of the table. Okay, transfer of right to use any goods for any purpose. For cash, whether or not specify for a specified period, deferred payment or any other valuable consideration. Machinery given on hire, okay. Following composite supplies, works contract, works contract means a contract for building, construction, fabrication, completion. Erection, installation, fitting out, improvement, modification, repair, maintenance, renovation, alteration. Or commissioning of any immovable property wherein transfer of property in goods whether as goods or in some other form. Is involved in execution of such contract. Supply by way of or as part of any service. Or in any manner, any other manner whatsoever of goods being food or any other article for human consumption. Or any drink other than alcoholic liquor or human, for human consumption. Where such supply of, such such a, where such supply or service is for cash, deferred payment or other valuable consideration. In this regards, this regard, following issues have been clarified by the C B S, C B I C. We will go and go through this portion tomorrow, we will stop here, like right at the end of page number fifty two. From here, we will continue tomorrow. Non-supplies under G S T will proceed tomorrow, maybe another ten pages. So we have reached the end of today's study session. Let me just quickly recap our status. So today's date is thirteenth of October two thousand twenty five. We studied till page number fifty one, I think, fifty one or fifty two, fifty two. Okay. So tomorrow we will have. There's forty three to fifty two to revise tomorrow. And then we will also have round three of page number eleven to sixteen. Once we complete this, we will read maybe another five to six new pages. I will see you tomorrow. Thank you for joining with me in today's study session. Thank you and bye-bye.